Good evening. It is Thursday, February 17th, 2022 at 7:17 PM. My name is Joe Baker and is Mayor of Kennedy, Texas. It is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this workshop meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the role and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One, Councilmember Cindy Stein.
Here.
District Two, Councilmember John Rodriguez.
Here.
District Three, Councilmember Chris Parker is absent and unable to be with us this evening. District Four, Councilmember James Douglas is out of state and unable to be with us this evening. District Five, Councilmember Sandra Schultz.
Here.
Three members of the city council are present and we do have a quorum present this evening. If everyone would please rise for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us this evening as we do the important work that we endeavor to do for the sake of the people of this community. Please give us knowledge, patience, and understanding, kindness, and compassion as we engage in meaningful discussions to do what is best for the people of Kennedy, Texas. For it's in your holy name that we pray. The Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the opening agenda, I will call this workshop meeting to order. And item number five, open workshop for the purpose of planning and discussing the design and construction slash remodeling enhancements of the building located at 820 Escanito Road, Kennedy, Texas, formerly known as Six Shooters Restaurant and now referred to as the City of Kennedy Convention Center. Sir, Mr. Berger, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. I believe you have a presentation for us.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me. After our last workshop, myself and a colleague came out and field measured this entire building and tried to measure some things on the site since there are no existing drawings. We pretty much use the software where we have to build and model the building as is. So, once we got a good footprint of the existing condition, we came out, verified a few things, did a few field checks, and then we started some schematic scenarios. And we went two different routes with two different schemes. I was going back through, as you remember in our last workshop, there was lots of comments and I had lots of notes, and they were kind of all over the place. So, I was going over those and going over those and going over those. So, we kind of had two different seams going. They were kind of going two different directions. And we came and had a meeting with Mr. Lynn and kind of just wanted to make sure we were going in the right direction, which direction was the best way to pursue. So, he kind of straightened us out and pointed it to where we are today. And so, what I'm going to show you tonight is the two schemes that we've come up with. They're very similar, but yet different in their own way. They function the same. The exterior stays the same in both schemes. It's mainly just the way the interior flows. But in looking at it, it's, we keep referring to it as a convention center and over and over again, but as I look through my notes, it's a little more than that. It needs to be, it just kept coming back to be more of a multipurpose building. All the different things that the city wants to utilize it for, all the different meetings, renting out certain spaces, weddings, I mean, it turns into almost a venue in that aspect. And so, if you go, if it's just a cold convention center, those two, trying to tie those together, very challenging. And then also, a lot of feedback that we got from the community was a lot of people want that building to look the same. They don't want us to go in there and cover everything up and throw ceilings into it. And so, playing off that is where we came with these schemes. This is option one floor plan. One idea that we went over with Mr. Lynn was the outdoor patio area of the existing restaurant was to enclose that to add more square footage to the building. And that's this area here. So, restrooms, adding restrooms to the facility was a main concern. So, what we've done here is add two large men's and women's restroom. The main entrance here coming into the venue or the convention center, I guess, would be here coming into this entry slash gallery area. So, this is kind of a multi-use area in itself, could be used for a lot of different things. You would, you could walk in, you have your circulation. So, the building's divided into two buildings, existing buildings. So, you have this existing wall, this masonry wall that's going right here. And there's a lot of challenges, as I keep mentioning over and over again. This area outside is about three inches lower than the finished floor of this area, while the main hall, what I'm calling the main hall back here, is about two and a half feet lower than this. So, we have to have a lot of stairs and internal ramps for accessibility. So, we tried to figure out ways to do that. You have to have circulation. So, this scheme is set up with three halls. Both schemes will have three halls is what I'm calling, three rental areas, including the gallery. In this scheme, we keep the, this existing opening, what was the existing entrance would be just an exit, like an emergency exit or loading area for something that might be going on in this hall. So, you would enter, this is, hall number two is what I'm calling it. This is the existing wall. This would be hall number three, and then you'd have your main hall. Now, the main hall is rather large, it's about forty, trying to read that, forty-four hundred square feet roughly, total spacing here. And the existing building has that wooden stage over on this wall. And I looked at it and the problem with having a stage in a multipurpose type venue like this is it kind of nails you down. Everything's got to work that way. So, if we take the stage out, if you were to utilize just a large room, one large room, you could put like a temporary stage pretty much anywhere in that space. So, you could put, you could put it on this wall here. You have a stairwell and a stair here. And then this ramp is for accessibility to get to the space. So, if you remember, I may have a view, I'll have, I'll show you a view of it, but this wall is not that attractive. It has two different bricks meeting, so what we did was we created a partition here to kind of hide that and also work as a backdrop in case you wanted to do something on, on this area. But it's really just opening up that space to give you as much versatility as possible. We added a bride room slash green room, because that was requested, near the restrooms over here, AD storage here. And then the idea was to leave these restrooms kind of in the same configuration, but just redo all the finishes, redo the fixtures, kind of spruce them up. And here is the kitchen, freezers. Mr. Lynn wanted to keep that all in the same location, so back here we have the office and storage, and there's an existing toilet back here, which we would refinish these areas as well. But the main focus is this area and all of this, because this will be what the public is really going to see the most of. So, any questions on that so far? I talk pretty fast. What I'm going to show you now is some views. One thing that both, both had is here, this existing exit out of this main hall, front of the main hall, there's an existing platform out here with a ramp. Well, to dress up the back of this building, which has a lot of movement and some cracked brick back there, we wanted to create a long porch around the side of the building to tie that into this existing patio area. Once again, a little bit of a challenge. This is about one, almost two foot, not quite two foot, lower than this patio, and it doesn't match up with this finished floor. So, there's, there's a step here, there's a little ramp here to match this big porch here. So, the idea is you could literally rent this whole space out, use this back as an entrance, because there'll be parking out here if you have an accessible ramp here, or rent this and/or rent that, to have three different things going at one time if you want to. You'd have the versatility of doing that.
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The smaller sections that are, says circulation.
Right here, these hallways, yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. The two rooms that are there, that are two separate rooms in the green.
Those two.
Yes. How big are those rooms?
The smallest one is six hundred and fifty-one square feet. That would be this one.
So, what by what? My brain is not thinking six hundred square feet.
I did not bring, I did not bring a scale. That's, if you've been in that building, that's the, that's the existing, what I call the pool room. That's, this is an existing wall right here. These are where those columns are. So, we're utilizing existing structure and just closing in where these existing timber columns are.
Okay. What, I can't think from, I'm not familiar with that building. So, where was the bar area?
Bar was right here.
Okay.
Right in this area. And it came out into this, into this room.
Okay. Now I know where I'm at.
And then there's, there's a row of timber columns here, and there's a high, there's a high brick masonry wall that sits on top of them, and it divides that whole front room up. So, we're closing this off and creating its own small room, rental room here, and then have a larger medium-sized one, and then the main hall, what I'm calling, will be there. And due to the, we need, in this scheme, we need to have this hallway because this room has to have exits and everybody has to be able to exit out in that.
And you don't know what the width of that hallway is?
I can get it for you. I don't, I don't know.
No, I'm just curious how much.
Looks about twelve feet, just judging by the square foot dimensions of the space.
The width of it, Joe?
Maybe ten or twelve feet. Just guessing.
This, this small hall here?
Oh, no, the circulation hall.
Oh, the circulation hall. Yeah, I'm sorry. It, it is, it's about, I think it's about, well, that's a six outdoors, about eight feet.
Eight, okay. This is designed to be fully ADA compliant?
Yes, sir. Yes, so that, and that's why in this scheme I have to, we'd have to do some kind of slope the floor here a little bit to ramp up, rather than, you know, raise this whole finished floor. You could utilize a small gradual slope on the floor to get up to that existing open. This is existing case, well, existing opening, we return it to a case.
Since this building has so much offsetting rooms, you know, which you just pointed out, adding those bathrooms over there on the other end, is that going to take up a lot of cost tying that, tying that in and making it proper?
Well, I, I'm not going to lie, just looking at this scheme, the thing that will cost the most in this whole thing will be this, this space right here. Because the most construction we're doing is going to be right here.
Yes.
We're going to have to tie, yes, we're going to have to find an existing plumbing line and tie that in. You'll have to bust through the concrete. And then this is that existing low wall that now has a fence on it in this area. We're going to have to cut that fence out and then frame a wall, close up to the existing roof and kind of close it in. And then the other caveat to this space is it's not conditioned, so we'll have to condition it. So, out of the whole thing, that, this, this will be the probably the most expensive square foot area. Now, one thing that I did want to point out, another thing that we did in this design is originally when we were working with this building, we were just working with this area and then this was the patio. By closing this, and when we get into the construction document, getting to the bidding, the way this is set up, the design is set up, you could actually bid this as an alternate or you could bid this back porch as an alternate, just so you can see your pricing, just in case you got into, oh, we spent way too much money on this, it costs more than what we really wanted to budget. We don't necessarily have to do this now, or we don't have to do that now. We could maybe just do that and maybe do the porch later. It's kind of set up in, in packages almost.
Well, mostly, you know, whenever we're doing something like this, people always want more bathroom.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so if, if the cost is going to be too much to go to the existing plumbing, the water line, the six inches up here in front of the property.
Yeah.
To feed the building, and then the sewer line is in the back. So, if it would be more cost-effective for us, instead of tying into the existing plumbing, which is, parts of that building are very, very old, and I know it's probably existing cast iron underneath.
Right.
So, tying the cast iron is not cost-efficient, you know, because it's probably going to fail, you know, since it's been there so long. So, my point would be to just go around the building, especially instead of coming this way, which is going to cost us more money.
Right.
Go off the back and go tying to the main.
I would assume if we, we would either come this way or come around somehow, not, not cut through the slab. So, really don't know what the condition of that slab is or what we'd be cutting into, so.
Yes, because that, that, that main portion of that building is over a hundred years old.
Yes, yeah.
Shannon, Shannon, do you have a question? I saw your hand earlier.
I did, and it's okay.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Is it possible to flip the men and women's bathrooms so that the women's bathroom is there with the bridal room because the bride, the bunch of her bridesmaids are going to need the bathroom, and they're not going to run across the hall?
You mean flip these two?
To flip?
Oh, yeah.
Where you have the men's bathroom.
It's just fixtures, yeah.
Yeah. It's just a matter of to go ahead and make a note to, to flip it.
Got it.
That does make more sense.
They would have figured it out eventually, but hopefully not.
Brides have to use the restroom?
The entourage.
It's an ordeal.
I do like the additional restroom space. I think that's going to be a major enhancement for, you can give people a lot of flexibility for special events. You really just can't have too many restrooms if you've got a crowd of 300 people for a wedding. Do you, do we know the capacity for each one of these spaces?
Those are questions I probably should have wrote down. We were figuring that out. You can, you can figure it, that's forty-four, I didn't bring my glasses, forty-four, twenty-eight. Loop table and chairs, fifteen, fifteen square foot per person, so you can do the math that way. Standing room only is seven.
I can't do the math.
I can't do it in my head. I can pull my phone out.
I'm an artist. I'm not a mathematician.
I probably should have wrote that stuff down, but that'll give you an idea of.
I think for an arse size town, that's more than enough.
It's about 300 people, it looks like, in the, in the main hall.
Hundred and ninety-five.
One ninety-five?
One ninety-five.
In here?
Is it the capacity in this room?
Oh, so we're doubling capacity over there. That's marvelous.
Almost, yeah.
Yeah, you gain a lot, a lot more square bush taking that stage out. And then we would demo that existing ramp, it's really not compliant right now in that wall, and kind of open it up, have a stair here, and then this is more of a platform at the same level and then ramp down. You have an idea of, or option of going around or going out this doors, this back porch.
I really like both these designs, and I do like removing the stage to give more space, because not every event's going to need a stage.
Right. That was the, that was the choice.
If there's a conference, this is going to give them the ability to have three separate breakout sessions happening simultaneously. And I don't think we have a facility in this county that will offer that kind of flexibility for, for multi-rooms. Most of the halls around here are just big, single space enclosure.
And that, that's the reason you, you really need these restrooms, is if something's going on here, you don't want people coming through their space. And I didn't really want to divide this space up. We talked about it, we kind of went over it with Mr. Lynn at one point, but if you look at that existing space, it doesn't have the large wood trusses that this, this space has. It has the pipe welded arch trusses, and it just didn't seem right to try to chop that room up. We looked at it different ways, and it, it always ended up being difficult to someone to have to come back up a ramp or upstairs to go, or to go use the restroom and walk around and go back and forth. It was better if we just divided it kind of in a north south concept, so.
Excuse me. One other question. In the two, again, the two smaller green areas down below, and you have the kitchen off to the left.
Yes, ma'am.
And all those doors. Is it, I mean, what would happen if you bring that wall with the door going into the smaller room up to match the other sized room, and then move that kitchen door down to the corner so that makes that smaller room?
Is that a load-bearing wall?
Yes, it is. And what I'm trying to do is utilize the existing opening and not mess with the kitchen equipment and all the plumbing that's inside that wall. That's why, that's why that's, that's where it is. That's an existing open, that's the existing door.
When you walk through that door in the kitchen, as soon as you walk through the door, on the right-hand side is where you get all the wash tubs, the bins, basins, all that are on the wall. All that would have to be moved in order to shift that door entry.
Due to just trying to save money, we're trying to just leave this, everything in place. I mean, we can dress it up a little bit, but we don't want to move anything other than we're closing this existing door down here, because it's really not.
Okay. I think I've only been in there once or twice.
So, if you're having two things where there's a smaller room and a bigger room, their bathrooms are open.
Unless there's something not going on here. Yeah, if, if you have the ability to lock these down, or you would, or you couldn't leave it all open, these guys could go here and these guys could just walk out and go out.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at it, we have everything locked up.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yeah. They would walk down here and go in here.
Instead of going across.
Yeah, that's this whole, this whole idea of the circulation door that goes around.
The common area, that's why you have the common area.
Mm-hmm. And then this is kind of just here for circulation for the kitchen, because the kitchen also has to have access to all three areas.
Well, yeah, okay, and that makes sense, too. It's a lot more room pushing carts or whatever, people coming and going, I guess, yeah.
The, the new walls that are going in to separate Hall Three and Hall, Hall Two.
Yes, sir.
Are they just standard walls? Are they going to be a little more soundproof than average or?
Let me show you what I'm thinking. So, let me, I'll get to that. Let me just, this is, this is if you walk in the, an optional one, you walk in the front door. So, you walk in, we want to stain the patio concrete, kind of go with the same look as the existing building. We think we could probably find a product to kind of line that existing stained concrete up.
A little more high gloss?
Right. Make it a little glossy, make it a little dressy. We tossed around ideas of possibly putting flooring in, but everybody kept going back to my notes, everybody kept wanting the building to really keep the same feel, the same look. So, this would be, I guess, the main, the gallery when you walk in, and that's that existing doorway. We'd have a case opening, we'd go to the circulation hall, men's and women's restrooms either way, but it's kind of a large area, about sixteen hundred square feet. We had talked about whoever is in charge of the convention center would probably have a desk somewhere along this wall or some kind of, some kind of station here kind of in open, more, this is more of an open concept. So, the right over on this area is that pad, existing patio out the door. We closed that in, add some windows here, have a glass door so you can see down, kind of a nice little area out there, dressing that area up. The idea is to, these would just be drywall. We're kind of going with just a simple palette of colors right now. This would be the main circulation hall right when we walk through that case opening. So, just like I mentioned, that existing wall has those large 12 by 14 beams that go across and it's holding that load-bearing masonry wall. Want to kind of keep that same look and then bring these timbers in, kind of create the same rhythm and match that. And then we would close that in with drywall, just like we would do the existing sides. So, you have a door, this would be doorway to Hall Number Two, and then this would go to your main hall and you'd take that core door there. This will be what Hall Number Two looks like. This is that existing wall with that existing concrete beam underneath, that's those timbers, and these are those existing columns. So, we were trying to match that architecture here and then just close that all in with drywall. And due to the width of, of those beams, we would, we'd almost build like a double wall with insulation in there for soundproofing.
So, it could be a lot more soundproof.
Right. It'd be pretty, because you have a masonry wall here, soundproofing here, because like you said, you might have somebody in here having a engineer or something, music, and then somebody across in the main hall trying to have a conference or something, or a meeting of some sort. So, sound's going to be kind of important. So, we have the width here to do that. One thing that we, once we get into it a little bit more and we start getting some pricing, those large timbers may be fairly expensive with lumber prices now, so we may look at kind of furning those out like a faux pas to mimic that. But that's kind of the, the idea of how we're going. Take all this existing trusses, existing wood up here, clean that all up, take a lot of that conduit and wiring and things down. Of course, we still have some new conduit, but my idea originally, and we're going to get into this once we move forward with engineers, is there's that existing light, the existing incandescent lights that are drilled through each one of these trusses, they're in the bottom of those trusses. Well, my thought was we would leave that and utilize that, and then in between each trusses have some long, like thin linear fixtures, more LED fixtures, so that, say you are having a party or something that needs a mood or a lower light mood, you'd use those existing lights. But then if you're at a conference or something, or after something's over, you want to do cleanup, you flip that on and then you get the bright light of the LEDs in there. But then to kind of hide them in between these trusses, because I don't want to have a bunch of fixtures hanging there. I'm thinking something really long and linear to kind of, kind of hide in those trusses there.
That'd be good to have that flexibility.
Kind of like double switching. This is that circulation hall going to Hall Number Three. Hall Number Two would be on the left. This is that existing wall where those windows are. And one thing we probably will have trouble doing is finding a brick to match that brick. When we close those, take those windows out, looking in the Hall Number Two, we're going to have to try to fill those holes in, and that's, that's going to be kind of tough, because that's a pretty tough line, and no telling how old it is. I measured those bricks and they're kind of a unique size, because it's a very old building. This is that Hall Number Three. The existing door to the kitchen was here, this is looking out. So, we would, this is the existing wall, so we would close that, that in. So, this is kind of, kind of the little small little meeting room. I say it's really small, but it did hold a little bit less than 50 people, so that's like one door.
I really like that all three halls are going to have natural light coming through those.
And the windows were a big request from everyone, too, because I, I mentioned some of the windows and they said, oh, everybody said we're going to keep all those windows. So, this is coming from, straight from the kitchen Hall Three into the main hall. So, at the end of the main hall, this is that wall I told you about, that kind of hides that ramp, so you don't really see it. You come out, there's a stair here and there's a stair here. And then these are just existing, existing windows, and we would probably replace that door with a new door, but you have this big open wall on this side. And then looking back in the center, that, that's, this is coming from the main gallery to the entrance. So, you have kind of a platform you can step down or then go down the ramp on the backside of the wall. So, this wall kind of sets a backdrop and also hides the, the ramp and that wall, because there's a beam that comes here and stops, there's another beam here that stops. The windows aren't the same height behind that, they're all different heights. So, it kind of dresses that area up.
I think it'd be perfect for a large projected image.
Right, right. And then this is looking back, here's your storage room, your frame room, bride room, and the two restrooms there. So, that's, that was scheme one. This is scheme two. So, like I said, they're very similar. This one, the entrance stays the same. The difference is we moved the restrooms over here, kind of thinking about cost, less concrete to chip out to get plumbing out this way. And then also, it allows us, we're thinking of enclosing an office, so that someone that's running this convention center has their own office here up front, rather than an open concept. This one's a little more closed. So, you want, you have the office, the rental office, or whoever who's in charge would be here, very large, there could be more than one person there, because it's a very large room. Two restrooms, and then this gallery, it's about 200 square foot smaller than the other. The other one's about 1,600, this one's 1,400.
That one blends in better because it goes straight into the wall.
Right.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
This one, we would close the existing door here and then cut a new door in here, or a case opening out door, it just opens up into a hall. We will have to have some kind of slope floor here, it's going to be a little troublesome with that door, but I think we can do it. But yeah, you have less circulation, it gives you a larger Hall Two. Instead of 1,900 square feet is 2,000.
Twenty-two sixty-nine.
Twenty-two sixty-nine. Hall Three is the exact same size, and then the main hall's pretty much the same size. So, really the difference is Hall Two and the way this entrance is configured. We would still need this just for exiting, because by bumping that number up, they need We would still need this just for exiting, because by bumping that number up, they need two exits to get out of there, so we kept utilizing that opening there.
I think it'd be easier to find the plumbing, that or to go around the building to the back.
Yeah, that's, that's the main reason why I talked to Mr. Lynn, that's why I really wanted to show you. Looking at a plan is one thing, but when you look at it in the actual space, so there's the difference, the main difference. When you walk in the front door, you know, everything's to your left, the restroom's to your left, there's an office right here, and then that would go to your circulation, rather than, scheme one is kind of centered in the room, restroom's on the other side. This is a little bit smaller space, like I said, about two hundred square foot less. This is looking back, if you, if you walk over to that opening that we're cutting, you're looking back at the main entrance. So this would be your main entrance, there's the office, and here's the two restrooms there. So we take up this partition here, kind of divide that space up. This would be that main circulation hall taking you down to Hall Number Three, and then Hall Number Two is there. One thing I wanted to point out, Hall, this second scheme, this scheme, I was thinking about, this scheme would be more conducive to like a wedding, because this would be where the after wedding is, or the, they would be doing things in here and then walk out, and then the bride and groom would walk out right on this kind of unveiling stair that's centered right in the middle of the room.
That's a, that's a good point.
Utilize these two, these two spaces at the same time is what, the way I was thinking. So you have overflow in both, you have large stuff here, but then you'd be eating or something in here. That's kind of, that's kind of the way it works, the same way in the, in the other scheme, it's just the door's here and then there's a door there, so you would walk around, or into the hall.
But in both schemes, your main, your main entrance is over there on the side?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, because I'll get to that on the, I'll get to that on the site plan. There, this would be the Hall Number Two, so it's, it's a lot larger, you have that existing door, it's hard to see here, it's like the existing doorway there, we utilize that, and then you have that whole line of windows in that space. So in this one, you would have the existing brick wall exposed in Hall Two, and then this, this wall as well is existing. So that's standing back in Hall Two, looking at the doorway, looking back at the doorway. So just in, it's the same as scheme number, option number one, we would have, carry that beam across, and this would be infill with drywall, have the existing trusses and woodwork up there. And kind of keep it simple, we're trying to keep it really simple, just because allows people to do a lot more with the space, versatility. And one thing when we get into electrical, you know, I have ideas of lighting, but the other thing we're gonna have to do is put like lots of plugs in there, lots of electricity, because a lot of people want plug-in lights, hang lights, and different things from the ceiling, I'm sure from those trusses, so we're gonna have to have electrical in there for that. This would be the view if you came through the main door in the main, in the Hall Two. You walk out of Hall Two into the main hall, this would be that, that what I call like the grand stairs, just kind of centered in the room. You're looking in the hall, so that would be this stair here. This is the same concept as scheme one, we wall off the ramp, we have a smaller platform there. And then that's looking back, like if you came around that wall, if you went down the ramp, you came around that wall, you're looking back into the main hall. There's your central stair from Hall Two, this is from Hall Three, and then there's your restroom and your bride room. And then this would take you back outside to the outdoor porch area. That kind of could serve as an entrance as well. So looking at the site, we have the existing parking, which is about, and this is, I didn't actually walk out there and count them all, but this is from Google Earth, and if you put striping, I was able to do some existing in the front, but if you actually stripe it this way, you'd get a hundred and seven spots on the existing lot as is.
Did you say a hundred and seventy?
Hundred, hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven parking spaces?
Yes, sir. That's based on just the existing layout here. Now, we would be adding this asphalt parking here on the side and strapping it, and that was an additional hundred twenty-seven spaces. So two hundred and thirty-two total.
Well, we can, we can move that, we own land.
We can, this is just, this is just, yeah, it's set up this way so you could add, but like, right now with the budget we have, this is probably not as big as you're gonna want to go with parking.
Is there a formula that you use to match the number of parking spaces to the square footage, or something along those lines?
That is, that's gonna deal with whatever ordinances y'all have, parking ordinances and things.
But two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces should be enough for the largest event?
Should be.
Well, they come in couples and a lot of people do.
It's more than twice than what's already there, so I would think so.
More around, close to three hundred.
Right, and that's not what y'all were requesting, was like two to three hundred, but this is, this square footage of the lot right here kind of fits in with what we're budgeting for. But it does allow you to do this in the future, because y'all be on, be on the lot, that's a lot of land back there. So here, what we were proposing was to come back in here and clean all this out, keep some of the more mature trees, there's very few that you might want to keep, but clean that all out, put some landscaping back here, and I'm just showing like a trail or a granite trail or something, and possibly you could put a gazebo or something back there, but just almost make like a little park or something. The idea is it's in the back, you have this hall utilizing this, this ramp, this back porch area, and you just kind of traverse over here if you wanted to take pictures or do something outdoors, to kind of function with that main hall, that's kind of where, how that, how that lies in there. Mr. Lynn talked about, you know, we're going to get rid of this existing storage building, and at some point we'd probably do another storage building here to store lots of tables and chairs and things for the venue space.
And there would be a view of that area from the porch that wraps around the main hall?
Yes, sir, right here. So let me show you though. So one of the main things, this is kind of a perspective, bird's eye view of the site with the new parking. This is the building, so we would add this covered drive area here. This is your existing, your existing lot is your ride here, there's a line right there, there's existing drive. We talked about adding a sign here, can't remember what he called that sign, it's a...
An LED?
Yeah, an LED.
Marquee?
Marquee, but a visual, ah, doesn't work for it, but anyway, you could put messages on it, a sign. And then this is that back kind of dressed up area here, and this is the new parking lot, how, how to lay out on the side. It's kind of a bird's eye view coming down, that's the view. That's a view from the parking lot looking in the new covered drop-off area. So you can come drive in or loop around and drop off either way, it works, it works both ways. And that extends, that's about nine hundred and forty-four square feet of extension, extending the same type of architecture out with the trusses. The idea here, this is all existing masonry, this is that existing masonry wall. So we would frame this from that existing masonry wall up, and then I was gonna put like horizontal galvanized metal panel to kind of match this galvanized roof, and kind of go with that galvanized brick feel to close this space up, and that's that existing, existing patio area. So this would be your main entrance, and this would be the new covered drive area added on to that existing.
I really like the covered drive area. If it's raining, that's a great place to, bridesmaids to get out of their vehicles without having to get soaking wet.
Well, it looks nice for a big old city, Kennedy emblem right there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I looked at different schemes and none of them, none of them looked good adding windows to that, and it just didn't, internally, externally, it didn't, it didn't work well. One thing I wanted to do is take down the green canopies and then put some wood-framed, galvanized, like standing seam roof to tie into the existing roof, and still come back and cover all of the door and existing windows on that side, that's outside. That's kind of what I'm showing in that view. Yeah, and this would be that metal panel there to kind of close the building in.
With both of these options, so with our, will we be able to do all of this with our existing budget, what we have left in these funds? And stay within budget?
I don't really use it right now, I'm trying to figure it out. That's kind of why, like I said, I'm looking at it in compartmentalized package, because as you know, construction costs, the only good thing right now is steel finding itself along. I did find that out, but we're not utilizing any steel on this other than metal panels. Most of this is gonna be wood-framed. Well, wood and concrete are moving faster right now, so I don't have a good answer. I'm hoping as we move forward to bounce this off of some contractors so I can kind of get a better feel. But right now, the numbers are everywhere, they're, they're just bouncing around.
I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I, I really want to stay within budget, I don't, or we, or we have to. We have those extra funds that we were made aware of the other day.
Well, you know.
Huh?
What's the budget?
I think we, once we bought that, we have around, right at two million left for this, for this own, and I might be wrong.
Wasn't that split between the youth center as well?
Yes, that's.
That's including. Wasn't it?
We might consider postponing the youth center, and that would give us flexibility to put more, raise the budget on this particular project if necessary based on.
I agree with you there, Mary, because we are, this is an existing building, and we need to do something with this right now. We need to move on this, because it's not doing us any good to have it and not be able to utilize it. And the youth center, we can, it's still in the planning stage, this is an actual building we have.
We can take them in sequence. I think Mr. Lynn had an idea of kind of doing them fairly within the same timeframe, but, but, but we have the flexibility to maybe just postpone that a little bit later for another budget cycle, and take what we have to work with now and put it into this.
And then when he made us aware of what we talked about the other night, you know, that we have, we have a little cushion, I think.
Yes.
Because that's gonna go into the general fund.
Yeah, budget's always a flexible, fungible thing, and I think we can, if we, if we see it's necessary and the benefit's gonna be to the public, it's gonna, it's gonna motivate us to maybe rearrange some things.
People are already asking me what we're gonna do with this, some of my, a lot of my board members. They want to, they want to utilize it.
It's gonna be a great thing for the community. Like I said, it's twice the capacity of this room, and it's gonna be beautiful. I mean, your designs are beautiful. Yes, much nicer.
I'd rather move on this, you know, as quick as we can.
I'm curious as to what, what kind of timeline are y'all thinking?
For, to get started or?
To get started and?
The next phase, well, I know y'all aren't making any decisions tonight, but the next, the next thing that I need is to know if we're going with option one, option two. I need to then move with whichever concept we want to pursue and get with my consultants, that being structural and mechanical plumbing engineers, and then move, move forward. And so the schedule really depicts on, depends kind of on their schedules as well as mine, but it'll take us a few months to draw the construction bid documents for this, like at least three or four, maybe more. It might not seem like there's that much we're really doing to it, but there's quite a bit going into it. We already have the SOLES report, so we can figure out what kind of foundation this, this might be and how to support this porch here. And then we also, Mr. Lynn, I think, has got a survey going, surveying the site, so. So we are moving, but this was just the first phase, the schematic phase, just to get the concept in front of y'all, so y'all say yay or nay, or you hate it, or you like it, or?
Tell us about the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Tell us about the, it looks like you got a smoking deck.
That's the, that is the existing patio that's there.
Is that the barbecue, or the fire pit?
Yeah, there's a fire pit there, and so Mr. Lynn wanted to keep that. At one point, we, we were looking and we asked him, because we were talking about bringing this porch around, and he said, no, I want to keep this thing and just, you know, dress it up, utilize the area. Kind of, exactly what you said, a smoking, smoking area, that, that's, that's really why that door, this door here is there. It's so, if I come here and I want to go out to this little patio, I can go through here, or I can just walk all the way around, or come down this ramp and then that's like a little exit to get to that patio. So the idea, yeah, is to try to get this thing up and working again, and put some new seating out here, dress that little area up. Yeah, that's, that's kind of.
That is a nice area out there. I thought it was real pretty.
It's gonna be especially nice.
But it can be very pretty.
Yeah, especially nice with that view of the new landscape there, you know, right now it's pretty plain, but, but like I said, if you have some trees, it's landscaped real nice, with a little walking trail or something like that, I think that'd really be nice. The porch material itself, is it gonna be concrete?
Yes, sir, right now I'm looking at this, this building this up with concrete and then just wood-framed porch. Whether, since this is an existing building, probably not gonna tie into the building, probably have the row columns against the building as well just to support it. I don't really want to tie into that existing brick at all. I mean, we'll flash at the top to keep water fluid in there, but I don't want to structurally attach anything to the building if I.
Better if it stands on its own.
Right. I mean, the foundation will probably tie together with, with some rebar, but I don't want to tie into this existing brick walls. I don't want to do anything, anything in that building is old as ever to me, and it's just, I don't want to cut holes in it right here is probably about as much as I want to do with it.
To treat it with kid gloves.
Yes, we're gonna fix, we want to dress it up, clean the brick up a little bit, clean the outside up, but yeah, I don't want to be doing too much to it if at all possible. I'm really surprised the guys that, whoever did this back, I think I looked at Google Earth, I think it was two thousand seventeen or sixteen when they actually did this thing, they did a lot to it.
It was a major remodel.
Yeah, they, they plowed right through a lot of things I would be scared to do.
But they managed to, you know, to salvage the historical integrity and the beauty of it, you know, it makes it a very unique structure.
It is very unique, and, and there's a lot going on, and like Mr. Lynn pointed out, no, no other town has this, or a building like this. Well, yeah, like I said, I've gone to Google Earth, and you can go back, and it goes all the way back to there's a street view, and it shows it like all grown up with trees, and it's just run down.
Always used to own it, Rudy Muñoz used to own it. That's who he sold it to.
I remember when he bought it.
Well, he sold it to those, those people from Lujan.
I remember when they bought it, it was a big deal.
Well, there's a lot of unique character in there, especially with the wood and the pan made trusses that are in there, and of course, these pipe trusses are all.
And then you have a wraparound porch, it looks like, from the back and the western side too, or the vendor ramp?
Yes, ramp right here.
Yeah.
So like I mentioned, the idea is, say you want to have something in this main hall, and you don't, you don't even want to need any of this, you can utilize this as the main entrance back here, have these four blocks, like if they want to run out just this space. So that, that's, these two work together in this, in this porch area. It kind of, kind of dresses up that back, if you put a link to your porch roof up there, kind of hides some of that brick that's there that's on the backside, so that's, that's a good road for all.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Shannon, because it's, it's not real, as is, it's not real good for load in, for equipment, things of that nature. So that's, that top section or that narrow, that's a ramp, correct?
Yes, this, you, you need this for accessibility, yes, to, because you have to have this ramp and that ramp for accessibility, just to get to the hall.
So if somebody was bringing in a big sound system, they'd go up that ramp and through those two main doors?
Right.
Your vendors are gonna be using that area mostly, and I'm assuming there's an interest in the backup kitchens, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Or caterers?
There's existing entrance right here, right now.
Caterers, you do like.
Will there be a sidewalk there, or is there a sidewalk?
There is a sidewalk, yes, this is existing sidewalk, this is all existing sidewalk I'm showing right here. The only new would be this porch here, and this is existing sidewalk, and then this we'd probably get rid of right now. It's just kind of existing concrete curb, like the apartment, we'd redo that.
The only concern I see is the storage.
That, yes.
Because if you're going to be storing tables and chairs for four hundred, five hundred, is that a, is that part of the building now?
That's gonna be, that's gonna be in the storage building that's on the side.
It's across the parking lot.
It's across the parking lot now.
Are you keeping that? I thought you all said you.
They're gonna replace it at some point.
Okay, so you utilize for your tables and chairs and stuff, so staff will need to take it all the way across the parking lot?
Pretty much.
In the rain?
It won't rain.
Okay, you say so.
Put that line on school spot down there.
We do have this storage room here.
I was just wondering, yeah, I was just wondering what that room is.
There, is that, I'm sorry?
That's existing, but it can be utilized either way.
It's pretty big, once they clean it up.
Yeah, it's full of all, it's full of restaurant stuff right now. It's like solid restaurant racks and things. So we probably don't really need any of that. So yeah, you have this whole storage here, and then that other toilet in this office section.
Yeah, it looks like about two hundred square feet of storage.
I'd probably be keeping the tables and chairs in there.
I don't think it's big enough.
That's where I thought it, I, I. I wonder how, how many chairs and tables are there?
A lot.
Oh, yeah, a lot.
We can always buy a portable building for, a new portable building for the back of the.
Well, that's what Mr. Lynn had mentioned, because the one there, I think said, El Jackson wanted to.
A big enough portable building where we can store, you know, because you're not always gonna have a big, big crowd, you know?
Would you, but would we keep it in the same spot, you know, because it's kind of awkward, it really is, it's like the.
Well, the one good thing is it hides the dumpsters, that's what's good about it, being back there. There's, the dumpsters are right there, and it kind of masks the dumpsters from view by.
But like what Ms. Ash is saying, that's a long way to come with tables and chairs, go across the parking lot, and then up the ramp, and in through the building to set tables, that's a long way to go. And if it's cold and raining.
It is, but you're right on that, but they.
True, but you, it is, but you're right on that, but they do come on, on racks with wheels to haul them.
Like this, we could keep them in them.
It makes it easier.
Inside the building, and if it's a big crowd, then we keep them stored out in the bigger storage area.
There's, there's a lot of...
You know, because, I mean, you're gonna prepare when you're doing something like that, you know, so everybody's gonna, hey, we need more tables, we bring them in, we need more chairs, but we'll keep them, like we keep in here, right there, always ready to go.
Like Ruby said, if they're on racks and they roll, it's not gonna be that inconvenient to do it. What, what would the distance be from, to the storage building, maybe 100 feet, something like that?
It's not that far, but it's not in there.
50 feet?
Yeah, it's not too far.
Maybe 50.
The bigger concern is to move the trash canisters, because once we do the parking lot with new asphalt and a big trash truck comes through it, it's gonna tear up our, our asphalt. So we probably need to think about moving...
Move them out to the edge?
Yes, and, and we need to build a cement pad for it, because asphalt does not hold up to those big trash trucks. It makes it look real ugly.
Yeah, where they stop.
Yes, they stop right in front of it, and they tear up everything. Number two looks better to me than number one.
I like number two myself.
Well, there's three out of five already.
They're both very, very nice, but I like number two. Y'all like?
Number seven.
There is a gallery out there, tell us what you want.
Functionality, I like.
You two are gonna be using it. Y'all like two also?
And you're gonna have staff out there, they're gonna want to...
And I love the way the office is there.
I did, I did have a question about the office door right there in that schematic versus the visual picture. I understand, I saw in the picture that you have a glass wall with a glass door, but your door is in a different positioning in your visual aid versus that schematic.
So if the door is further down, I mean, further up to the right corner?
Right there. Your actual door looks to be closer towards the restroom, or is...
It's not a solid door, man.
Okay.
But I can move it aside, I mean, you can flip it, it's not a problem.
The door's in the corner, then?
Yeah, right, right now in that scheme, I just had the door in front, but it, it could flip to the other side, and it's just for the last four...
It would probably look better on the inside, it'd be more symmetrical.
Right.
When you're looking for whoever's in charge.
Right, that, that was the idea, it's like, if I came here, uh, that, that was one of the problems, we were talking, when looking at design, you have that existing office in the back, but no one's gonna be back there, because you don't want to keep, you don't want to talk to somebody about renting this, an area, and then, oh, let me go get a piece of paper, and it's gonna all the way back here, or whatever, get that there, so you're gonna need something up here, that all the way. So, just made sense to put something up there.
Could we make that office back here part of the storage?
Right, that's what I was thinking it would be, it would, it would probably, all of these, this is just storage. So you have this as additional storage.
Isn't there an office upstairs?
I, honestly, I don't, I don't know what's up there.
I think it's above those bathrooms.
There's a door up there, but I didn't know what was up there, I, I didn't have a ladder, so...
There's something upstairs.
I don't know if that's a mechanical mezzanine, or, uh, or what's up there. I didn't, I didn't go in there.
So what you need from us to move it forward quickly, or as soon as possible, would be one or two, which option to pursue?
Yes, sir, that, that was it, really, I just, I didn't, I didn't want to overwhelm y'all with a bunch of different schemes, but the more and more we've tweaked it, the more and more we look at it, we narrowed it down to these two, they're very, like I said, they're very similar, the exterior is always similar, we're, we're keeping it as simple as possible, and trying to be as economical as possible, because if you really look at it, we're not, not adding too many walls, your main cost, like I said, is gonna be this area, and then, you know, some ramps, some concrete porch area, lighting, mechanical, but you already have existing mechanical here for this hall, uh, you have existing chemical here, just it's a modification done for, we have to somehow get air here, uh, that, that would be a little cumbersome, but...
End of plumbing.
End plumbing, but...
Yes.
So, Mr. Berger, I have a question. So, if I'm saying it right, you are not doing any slider walls, correct? Okay. Good, I think the...
Keep it one big space, I think that's, could be more functional, you have more flexibility with one large space.
We looked at trying to chop things up, and, uh...
Be too hard.
The, the problem is kind of what I mentioned there at our last workshop, and looking at, at those operable walls, or really the only one that you could do and exist, I mean, you could do it, but it'd be really costly, you'd have to come in and get a structure, because you don't really know what those trusses can hold, and if they could hold that, and, well, manufacturing's not gonna allow you to attach that, so it'd have to have its own structure anyway, and you'd have to add columns and footings, and, uh, they're heavy, they're about 10 pounds a foot, throw off a wall. Now they have the accordion style, nobody wants to use that, kind of, they didn't.
Well, you're taking care of the problem too now, because now you've offered, you know, two other rooms.
Right.
Three, right.
And there's no, yeah, so there's no reason to even consider...
Right, yeah, the entrance, we, we opened it up, so it, I call it a gallery, but it, it can be utilized itself, uh, really, if you want to...
Sure, the gallery up front, the, at the entrance, yeah, that could be considered another space as well.
If you wanted to do something here, I mean, that's a large space, it's really a large space.
That's bigger than a smaller room.
Because you have your window, you could set up something in this corner, you could do something here, I mean, you're...
Be a good pre-functioning space.
Large, large pre-function, what, kind of what we're going, going with.
I like the overall look of it, it seems like y'all have definitely taken everybody's account in keeping the overall style, historic style of the building.
Yeah.
And, and yet it's very neutral, so any group, be it corporate or celebratory group, can come in and do what they need to do, it's nice.
Multi-functional.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the challenge, was, like I said, going through the notes, and you're going on duration, oh, convention center, I'm gonna have this, I'm gonna have light boards on, and then wait a second, no, that's, it's gotta be both.
That's not what they're gonna get more, it's kinda hard. I'm really pleased, I think you've done a great job.
Me too, I think these are, this is excellent design, better than what I anticipated.
I'm excited. Stay going.
Mr. Lynn, uh, since Mr. Lynn's not here, I want to ask you, Ruby, um, do you anticipate that we would choose an option as an agenda item at a future meeting?
Yes, I can add this to the next, uh, regular session for an option consideration.
Good idea, I would like the two council members to be here to weigh in on it as well. So, yeah, if you could let Mr. Lynn know to place that, uh, I want to do it on the March agenda, on our March regular meeting. And then, once we get past that, then he can go on to finish out your design work for option two.
I'm sorry, there's not more people here to be able to see this.
We had a much bigger crowd the first time.
Yeah, I wish they were here so they could see what he's come up with, but...
Because we have another, another...
They trust us.
Yeah, two people actually use it.
The two people that are gonna use it, the most important.
Yeah, that's awesome. We could, we could... Ruby, if we have a, another meeting before then, we'll probably put it on as an agenda item.
Okay.
So, we'll leave that up to you if we, we have another meeting.
At the stands, we don't have anything scheduled until the March meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
I like it.
Any other questions for Mr. Berger while he's here?
I suppose so.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Y'all for having me.
It's gonna be a real asset for the city of Kennedy. People are gonna enjoy it, especially once it's completed and we have that first premiere event, it's gonna be very exciting.
Yeah, as we move along, uh, you know, I have 100 more questions, but two of them that just jumped out at me is kind of what you mentioned, signage, you know, how, how we handle that, uh, technology in that building, uh, that, what, how we want, what we want to do for that, so...
And I think we need to be real conscious about the residents in that area too, you know, the signage and stuff, lighting, that, things of that nature, we don't want it to be...
Well, even, like at the chamber, we've got that...
Real intrusive, you know what I mean?
We've got that little, I mean, that thing, I mean...
That thing will blind you coming down the road.
And think about, I mean, those people that live right across the...
Yeah, it's very...
Yeah, I mean, just mentioning that, that was a concern.
I have a, I have a complaint from my board, that's my district, and we have that sign right there, right now, so, and when that place was open...
Well, you know, it was, uh, to me, when the place was open, I thought that was horrible signage, horrible, you can't even read it, it's very dark.
Small.
Um, it was very small, I couldn't make out what it said, I had to stop and guard.
The sign is not gonna be facing...
To see.
It's gonna be north and south, not east and west. If it was facing east and west, then I'd probably get some complaints, but as long as it's one with the traffic, I think it'll be all right.
Yeah.
Because that's, you know, that's who's gonna see it, people driving by, you know?
We just want to be sensitive to the, you know, to the residents over there, this is, it's just beautiful, very nice place, but we don't want it to be so intrusive that it causes problems, uh, during, you know, daily lives.
Well, I'm excited about this.
I am too.
If our children ever decide to get married, I think that'd be a perfect place for it.
Uh, one more, one more thing, back to that parking, um, where you were showing us the parking lots, too. So is that one way in and one way out?
Yes, ma'am.
We have that other one, you see it over there?
I mean, yeah.
And people just are using it, mainly it's for, uh, Alamo concrete, because they're, they're our neighbors right there. That's where they come in and out when their trucks...
But is the drive on our property or theirs?
It's touching both.
Right in the middle?
I think our, when we get that survey done, it's gonna, it'll be right there. Mainly, mainly, it was, that other entrance was always used for Alamo concrete.
I guess that'll be okay, you know, when they're coming out, we won't give a bottleneck on that one.
They're not there all the time. Alamo concrete is only there when they have floors.
No, I'm just thinking of if we had a large venue, something big, like a wedding or dances or something, you know?
Try, try to add it in the entrance, you gotta do a text tile.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was about to say, text tile.
Textile is very big about their, their problems.
Yeah, that's, that's a, is a, is an FM.
Oh, to do another entrance, or it's...
Yeah, we have to, I mean, we do it all the time, but it is difficult.
You gotta jump into their hoops.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't allow you to pad it right here, because it's too close to that, so I, I don't even know if they...
On the corner.
They wouldn't like it, I mean, I know a lot of their engineers.
Or even to move it, you know, one on each corner.
Yeah, you'd have to move it on the corners.
Or what you could do are circulars right there, where you have the entrance and the[1586.66]